Guys, welcome to the Isle of Seville Show. My name is Jerry Miller. Thank you kindly for joining us. We're live in Charlottesville across Alamo County, central Virginia, the Commonwealth in the world and the Isle of Seville Network. So much to cover. Ting fiber internet, the crazy fast internet behind this network, folks. And we're going to dot the i's and cross the t's on the Brackney news. Chief Brackney canned yesterday a press conference in front of City Hall. Now we know she's demanding $3 million from taxpayers in the city of Charlottesville. And as our friend Steve Harvey, who you will see on this program in about five minutes, has so very intelligently and aptly mentioned, this is also Alamo County money. There's a revenue sharing agreement between the county and the city of Charlottesville. So we'll talk about that. The other news that caught many off guard was the surprise resignation of Brian Wheeler, friend of the show, director of communications for the city of Charlottesville. So, so folks, boys and girls, people are dropping like flies in, in City Hall here. Interim city manager Chip Boils now working for an institution in Fredericksburg, Virginia. The director of communications, Brian Wheeler, has resigned. Sam Sanders, one of the deputy city managers, said, dudes, I do not want the city manager job. You're offering it to me, but there's no way in hell I'm going to take this. Now the former police chief, Rochelle Brackney, Dr. Rochelle Brackney is demanding $3 million smackaroos from taxpayers and from Alamo Countyans. Remember, revenue sharing. So let's again analyze what the hell is going on here in the fair city of Charlottesville that undoubtedly is the brand identity for much of central Virginia. Yes, you may live in Keswick. Sure, you may live in the Scottsville district. Yes, you may live in the Whitehall district. Sure, you might have a farm at in Croze. But, boys and girls, when you travel outside central Virginia, the brand that is central Virginia is Charlottesville. I tell people I live in the eastern side of Alamo County in Keswick, and people say, outside of central Virginia, where in HE double hockey sticks is that? But then I tell them I live in Charlottesville, and they're like, oh, Charlottesville. Oh, Charlottesville. And then you wait for the reaction. Who's experienced that? I certainly have. So here's the narrative. Here's the flip book. Here's the Cliff Notes version. And then we'll get amigo and friend of the program, Stephen Harvey, on the, on the show, a veteran, a gentleman who's running for Board of Supervisors, a husband, a father, and an entrepreneur. So, Dr. Brackney, pink slip, fired, canned. She was pink slip, fired, and canned because she was losing the confidence of rank and file officers in the Charlottesville Police Department. The robust aspect of the police department is the boots on the street, the men and women on the beat in the city of Charlottesville. And the men and women that were wearing the vest, the badge, had the gun holstered on their hip, and risked their lives day in and day out protecting the city of Charlottesville, were hitting the road jack and piecing out of the police department in Charlottesville. And the reason they were doing this at epic and record numbers was a lack of inspiration from leadership, a lack of confidence from leadership. And the woman atop the tonneau pole was Dr. Rochelle Brackney. Former interim city manager, Chip Boils, fired Dr. Brackney to help keep the attrition and the departure of rank and file officers from leaving the police department. He was trying to prevent the loss of men and women within the department because we need these men and women to keep our city safe. Interim city manager, former Chip Boils leveraged surveys from the Police Benevolent Association. And these surveys in the Police Benevolent Association showcased or papered the trail that rank and file officers were not fans of Brackney's leadership style. So these surveys were the leverage to pink slip Brackney, Chip Boils said. Mr. Boils created an op-ed in the Daily Progress. Now we know that op-ed was crafted by a PR firm from northern Virginia. Mr. Boils, who is a friend of the program, admitted he hired, he handled the firing of Brackney not in the best way possible in retrospect. Still, the collateral damage was done. Brackney then goes quiet since she was pink slip up until yesterday. And yesterday, she hosts a press conference with an attorney, an esquire, a lawyer from Johnny Cochran's law firm. Yes, the late Johnny Cochran, his law firm, a law firm that specializes in, let me read exactly from the Daily Progress of how they described this.
The word is politics is what you're looking for.
A, a, a law firm that specializes in accidents, personal injury, and wrongful death lawsuits. So the Cochran, and I'm reading from the progress right now, the Cochran Law Firm specializes in personal injury and wrongful death lawsuits. Still Charles Tucker Jr. in front of City Hall in Charlottesville, dealing with a wrongful termination case. Very odd to me. And Tucker and Brackney utilize the word demanding, demanding $3 million of your money and my money, Alamo County revenue sharing agreement, city of Charlottesville, real estate owners, business owners, people who buy groceries, retail items, go to concerts, movies, spend any kind of income in the city of Charlottesville. This is your money. So you have skin in the game. So that's the nitty gritty. Now, instead of potentially $3 million going to school reconfiguration, instead of $3 million going potentially to championing businesses on the downtown mall that are still recovering from a pandemic never seen before, instead of $3 million going to infrastructure roads, building a brand that needs recovery that we call Charlottesville, instead of $3 million going to nonprofits for them to utilize to close the social justice equity gap, we instead have to escrow said money for a potential lawsuit where a fired employee is demanding it. I had a conversation, and I'm going to get to Steve Harvey in 45 seconds to get his take on this. He's looking quite dapper, Mr. Steve Harvey. He's got a nice haircut. He's got a green polo on. He's, he's looking like 25 years old. Not the father of three, twins and, and a daughter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He's looking like a 25-year-old GQ model over here. You'll see him in a matter of moments. We have a $3 million problem that is just not cash money problem, over 1% of a yearly budget. City of Charlottesville runs on just about 200 million bucks, little over 200 million. She's asking for three. That's over 1% of a budget to run the municipality. We have a PR problem. And the last thing our community needs is more PR collateral damage. And if you're in the Scottsville district, the Whitehall district, the Rio district, if you're living in Fluvana County, Orange County, Green County, Gordonsville, Nelson County, the trickle over impact of PR damage in Charlottesville impacts your jurisdiction, whether you want to believe it or not. Judah Wickhauer is our director, studio camera. Let's welcome Steve Harvey to the program. Steve Harvey first. The haircut looks very good.
Thanks.
Looking sharp?
Happy to be on the show. I want to talk about a lot of stuff today. I want to talk about the election. I want to talk about my party tomorrow. I'm having Veterans Day party at my house.
This man's a veteran.
Yes, sir.
I want your take on, and first, we thank you for your service. Your take on the attrition in City Hall, your take on Brackney, you know, I hate to use this word, and I'm having a, a communication Twitter message thread with someone I respect dearly, and I believe he's watching now. Not going to say who it is. I have tremendous respect for you, sir, and the job that you are doing. I have slight disagreements with some of the, the commentary that you offered, and I will respond to that message.
Well, Jerry, let me ask.
I call it extortion.
Let me just ask this question. All right. So if you get fired, and it's a wrongful, you know, firing, then they, we have an expectation in society that you'll be compensated for that.
Okay.
And that expectation is that whatever you lost, you will get so that you're whole. I don't think there's, how old is Brackney?
I'll, I'll look that up.
I don't think that a police chief should make $3 million over 10 years, or 20 years, or 30 years. I don't think that that's how much money she should have ever gotten for doing that job. And I think that she's stealing it, not just from the taxpayers, but from that rank and file that you're talking about, that's boots on the ground, that were losing faith in her. If she cared about Charlottesville, and she cared about all those men and women that actually went out and carried the gun and protected and served instead of sitting in their office, she would say, I want $3 million, and I'm giving it to the guys that are out there walking the beat. That's where the money's going, because it's not for me. It's not about me or my ego. It's about the city of Charlottesville and taking care of the people here. I was fired wrongly. I think that this money should be given to these people. If she cared. She doesn't care. It's about money. It was always about money. She took the job to make money. She probably thought, hmm, I wonder if the super controversial and political place called Charlottesville will accidentally fire me the wrong way, and I can get $3 million.
Okay, so I'll give you a little background on this. Chief Brackney in 2020 was employed by the city of Charlottesville and had an annual salary of $162,817. 162K, 817. Let's say with benefits, a take home vehicle, some healthcare and some retirement, for the sake of a talk show and even number, so we can extrapolate said revenue and said pay.
Yeah.
Let's call it 200K a year. So 200K times 10 years is 2 million. She's asking for 3 million. If she made that 200K a roundabout number over a decade, she would take home 2 million. Now she's asking for three.
But Jerry, she's got to show the damage, right?
Yeah.
So if it's, if it's a maligned damage, right, if the city did something, and they say, we don't like her, and we want her to, to pay for this, and so we're going to smear her through the dirt, and, you know, that was our goal. If that's what happened, then we have a different conversation. I don't think that's what happened at all. I think that they said what they saw. Look, the rank and file are leaving. We can't keep you on board. We're just telling the truth mostly about your performance, and now you need to leave. If telling the truth damages somebody, you don't have to make that restitution. They're allowed to say, as a city of Charlottesville, we don't like this police chief, and we need to find somebody else. You can't damage them unnecessarily, though. And there's where the gap is. That's not a $3 million gap.
Steve Harvey, Steve Harvey, I, I appreciate this man's straightforwardness here. I'm going to ask you a couple of follow-up questions. I love when you come on the show. You're a man that is, who speaks with conviction and passion, a man who's running for Board of Supervisors here in Alamo County. I'll throw this to you. I also agree with you that city of Charlottesville personnel did not tarnish Brackney's reputation or her opportunity to climb the career ladder. I agree with what Steve just said, that when rank and file lose confidence and sprint for the door and don't want to work for the team anymore, it's like a head coach of any sports team who can't get his linemen, his linebackers, his offensive line, his quarterback, his wide receivers, his defensive backs to play inspired ball because of his leadership problems. What happens to the head coach? Can't.
Yep. If the players don't show up for practice, the coach gets fired, not the players.
That's exactly right. So the similarity is there. So how would you describe what Brackney is doing from what you can see?
I mean, it sounds like grifting. It sounds like specifically grifting. I'm going to find an attorney's office that has a powerful name that will resonate with a very left-leaning city and the people in the city, and I'm going to hire them, and they're going to scare them into giving me whatever I want. That was the decision. The personal injury and wrongful death lawyers that also have the most political name in law.
The personal injury and wrongful death attorneys. Also, you could potentially lump into the ambulance chasing of the profession. How do you think this reflects on the region in totality?
Oh, well, I don't, I don't want to, I don't know. I don't, I have, I have my own views of Charlottesville. I mean, we left the city, but you, you love it. And I love Charlottesville. I came back here. I got out of the Army, and I moved back to Charlottesville. I love this place. I just see it going very much in the wrong direction. It's, it's big government, big taxes, big programs, it's big ugly firings and political hirings, and it's all, it's a mess. It seems like a big mess. The whole thing, that's what happens with mono-party. You end up with one party rule, things get corrupt, things get weird, people do stuff that doesn't have anything to do with the right thing. But, yeah, you don't have enough pushback. There needs to be a lot more conflict within the government of Charlottesville than at the beginning, at the outset, at the debate part. Otherwise, you get to the end, and you get all the conflict when people are actually supposed to go to work and pick up the trash and do policing. If you don't have the debate in the beginning, it ends up happening at the end, and it costs people time, money, maybe lives. I don't know.
Kevin Higgins has a question for you. Kevin, we'll get to your question here in a matter of moments. Grayson has a question for you. Grayson, we will get to your question in a matter of moments. We're streaming to 15 Facebook pages, 15 Twitter accounts, LinkedIn, Instagram, YouTube, Spotify, iTunes, and Apple Podcasts. John Chaven, great discussion. Thank you. Jesse Rutherford, we love when you watch the program. He's tuned in. Nelson County Board of Supervisors. You're running for Board of Supervisors. You, from a history or historical standpoint, while you lost last time to Ann Malik, you did so in narrow fashion. And you showed, I thought it was, I thought it was closer than it would be.
We made a very good show.
It was closer than I thought.
Yeah, we broke records. We got 48% more votes than the previous.
That's what I'm saying.
Fiscal conservative. I mean, we, we crushed, but we didn't crush enough.
So here's where I'm going to go with this. Nicholas Erp, welcome to the program. Gloria Diane West, welcome to the program. Bellme, welcome to the program. Beverly Chowar, welcome to the program. Here's the question I have for you. This past election showed the Commonwealth is much less blue than we thought, and certainly more of a purple hue. We had a Republican wave that started with the governor's race that I was surprised by. McCullough is a machine, and the Commonwealth, surprising fashion, women voted Yonkin instead of McCullough.
With schools, top to bottom, schools.
Open-ended on anywhere you want to go. What happened?
Uh, it was a, I have a hard time calling Virginia purple.
Okay.
Because.
So you still say blue?
Well, do you say purple when a wave crashes and the, you know, the, the sandbar disappears, and then you say, well, there was never a beach there? I don't know. It's hard to say because it was such a perfect combination of things. We've heard for the last five years, each statewide candidate come forward, make a compelling argument, the numbers looked this way, that way, and then it was a crushing defeat every single time. Last year, the best candidate we had to that point, and now we've got the governor, Glenn Yonkin, so you can't besmirch the, the sitting chief, but last year, Dan Gate was on paper and in person, the best candidate ever, right? I mean, one-legged veteran with a beautiful family, twin boys, just like me, older daughter, went to West Point, taught at West Point, deployed multiple times, professor of history, I believe, or was it military science? I'm not sure. But he's a, he's a PhD, just the quintessential perfect Republican candidate. And he got destroyed last year. Now, it was a Trump year, and it's Virginia, and Virginia's wishy on Trump, but he shouldn't have been beat by that much, unless it's a quite blue area, or Republican enthusiasm and Republican volunteerism going into the 2020 election was so depressed that there was just never any chance for a, a strong, transparent Republican election. It's, I'm droning on. The point is, we won this year because of schools, because of strange comments made by candidates that went the wrong way, because the president has not produced the kind of results that many Democrats thought they were going to get, I think, because Democrats crossed the line, or didn't vote. Did you see the numbers out of Kale?
I did.
22% down?
I did. I did. And the Kale district, which is, is, is a key voting block in the district that I'm running in, the Scottsville district, the Kale district identifies years past with the ideology of the city of Charlottesville. So when Kale is not super engaged in any election, that really hurts the Democrats, because the city of Charlottesville's ideology is very Democratic. I'm going to, this is how I described it, and I'll get out of your way. From what I could tell, Vanessa Parkill, I will get to your comment here in a matter of moments. It seemed to me that citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia are more moderate than the Democrats initially anticipated.
Yes.
The Democrats were trying to leverage anti-Trump hate to win the governor's mansion. The thing that's happening is every day that goes by, the anti-Trump hate resonates less and less because it's more in the past. And that strategy does not seem to be working anymore.
You're right.
And it certainly does not work when you alienate suburban moms, when you say, said moms have no say in their children's curriculum from a schooling standpoint. And McCullough alluded to that, despite his kids going to private school.
So we can, we can focus really strongly on negative things that happened in this campaign. There is a Democrat silver lining here that I think people should also go home with, though. This could also have been a message that the Democrats served the purpose that they were elected for.
What do you mean by that?
And that the people were satisfied with the results they produced. The statues got ripped down. They talked about LGBTQT and all that stuff for four straight years. Like they, maybe it was out of their system. They said, look, we got a big chunk of that social justice. It feels like maybe the thing is tipping a little bit too much towards race-related questions. I mean, the way, the way they're talking about race so much in schools now, nobody mentioned race the entire time I was in middle school, high school. I, I don't, I think that I was the, the 90s and early 2000s kid that didn't care at all about race. And now we're all grown up, and they talk about it all day, and we all think, well...
And you said you didn't care about race. You just saw kids, and you wanted to play with kids, and it didn't matter what they look like.
Every, I've told you this before. I was Jay-Z. I was listening to Jay-Z and Tupac and Biggie, and like, that was me. All of us were. Every white kid in the school had the headphone.
That's what I listened to.
That, everybody. It was Eminem and them, and that was it.
If I was listening to music, it was Tupac. It was undoubtedly Tupac. I got to bring up, first, let me read Vanessa Parkill's comment to you.
But wait a, wait a minute. You can't listen to that music and watch Fresh Prince of Bel Air every day when you get home from school, it's your favorite show, and come out concerned about race. You don't come out concerned about race. You come out thinking, I, I better find out why people are still talking about it. And then you start researching it, and I don't know. Everybody comes up with their own conclusions at that point.
Vanessa Parkill, watching the program. She lives in Earlysville, Alamo County. With Virginia being a right-to-work state, no calls necessary, wouldn't former Chief Brackney have to prove some sort of malice to have any leg to stand on? See, I agree with that comment here. What is Brackney's leverage going to be to win a bag of money from this jurisdiction? I just do not see Boils and city council colluding to fire Brackney and smear her reputation, keeping her from getting jobs in the future. I just don't see that happen. I know the counselors. I know, I know two of the five counselors, I would say, quite well. One of the five counselors, Counselor Sunook, I see probably four days a week, his office is right down the hallway from our studio. Okay? They are not smearing Brackney's rep to keep her from getting other jobs. It was just about losing confidence of rank and file officers, so a decision was made to keep, to go in a different direction. Now, a lot of people are asking about what's being discussed in Alamo County schools, and this repair kit for grading. Are you following this?
Oh, is that where they don't fail anybody anymore?
So here's the nitty gritty, and I can't wait to get your take on this. Get ready for this. How old are your kids?
Two and a half and five.
Okay. Two and a, so your five-year-old, he goes to, is he in, is she in kindergarten?
She does a, a school co-op.
Okay.
With other parents and...
Okay, fantastic. But she would go to Brownsville?
She would be going to Broaduswood.
Okay, okay. All right. So here it is. Alamo County, I'm going to paint the picture. Now, the Board of Supervisors is not involved with this because this is school board.
Okay.
Still, the Board of Supervisors.
They cut the checks.
Cuts the checks. Cuts the checks. Alamo County is considering fixes for creating grading equity. All right. This is how, what Alamo County is considering to creating grading equity. All right.
Jerry, I, I hope that everybody notices that he said it twice. The reason he said it twice is because there's no such thing as grading equity. It's very easy to achieve grading equity. You write down the same number for everyone, regardless of what they did.
Wait till you hear these fixes.
That's, that's grading equity.
I mean, here's how you get, from my standpoint, grading equity. You go home and you do your homework, and you study more, and you work harder than your, your peers.
No, no, no. That is grading equality. Equality meaning everybody judged based on the same standard. Equity means they all have to end up with the same result. It's very easy for a teacher to achieve that. You write down 75 for everyone, and you say, equity.
Here's what the school board's considering. I'm going to, I'm going to read to you about nine fixes, air quotes, fixes, and then you, you go anywhere you want.
Sure.
Get ready.
All right.
All right. Seriously, get ready for this.
This is going to be fun.
Board of Supervisors, Alamo County is considering this. First fix for grading equity. A, don't include student behaviors, effort, participation, adherence to class rules in grades. Include only achievement. B, don't reduce marks on work submitted late. Provide support for the learner. C, don't give points for, points for extra credit or use bonus points. Seek only evidence that, that more work has resulted in a higher level of achievement. D, don't punish academic dishonesty with reduced grades. Apply other consequences and reassess to determine actual level of, of achievement. E, don't consider attendance in grade determination. Report absences separately. F, don't include group scores in grades. Use only individual achievement evidence. G, don't organize information in grading records by assessment methods or simply summarize into a single grade. Organize and report evidence by standards, learning goals. Next one, don't assign grades using inappropriate or unclear performance standards. Provide clear descriptions of achievement expectations. Two more. Don't assign grades based on students' achievement compared to other students. Compare each student's performance to preset standards. Don't rely on evidence gathered using assessments that fail to meet standards of quality. Rely only on quality assessments. And there's, there's, there's more. And, and there's more. I mean, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm reading this, and I can't wait to hear your opinion here. I'm cringing. I'm cringing. I mean, don't punish academic dishonesty. So cheating, you don't get punished for?
So Jerry, if I was going to develop a program to produce the worst possible employees in the world, you just read half of what I would come up.
Okay, tell me why.
Dishonesty, timeliness, no competition, oh, competition, but not competition, individual, but, uh, don't, don't do that, and no group, don't compare anybody. Nobody should know how they're doing compared to anybody else. That was horrible. That was a terrible list. It sounds like the opposite of what you should do for all of those things, pretty much. If you wanted to make people prepared for the, the workplace, to turn them into entrepreneurs, you can't lie. If you make your own business, you don't get to lie to the accountant about how many apples you sold.
Or the IRS, to the IRS, to the federal government, to the, to, to Virginia taxation.
So to say that you don't, you don't need to be honest anymore to graduate from high school, well, they're specifically trying to create people that can't be in the workforce. That, that's what you would do if you wanted to make them that way, right?
I'm going to, I'm going to get to some of the viewers and listeners who have the topic on this. Johnny.
Am I, Jerry, hold on. Am I wrong? Is that not very, but why, though? That's the real question. Because I look at it, and I say, that's going to produce the worst workers I've ever heard of, and the worst business owners, and the worst... the worst workers I've ever heard of, and the worst business owners, and the worst everything. Nobody's gonna know how to compete. Nobody's gonna know how to succeed. Nobody's gonna know what success looks like.
No one's gonna be held accountable?
Yeah.
For their actions? It's okay to be tardy, it's okay to turn things in late, it's okay to cheat on your test and look at the paper across the aisle from you, because it's not gonna impact your grade? I mean, I, I, I...
You have to pay for all of these things.
I'm astonished.
You're either gonna pay for it now, you either tell the kids now, you have to be honest, you have to work hard, you have to be diligent. It's up to you. You're an individual, it's your responsibility. You can say all that now, or you can say it as the judge when they're going to jail, because they didn't, they didn't become part of civilization.
Um, Stephen Dolan, solid question, Steve Harvey. Where can I find that criteria? Is that county school policy? It is, um, a spec sheet that the Board of Supervisors is considering right now. Um, how can I get this? Judah, this is what I'm gonna do. Judah Whitkew is our director. Here's what I'm gonna do, viewers and listeners that want to see the spec sheet that I'm literally reviewing. I just sent you via text, I know you like it via email, but it's more difficult here, I sent it to you via text, this spec sheet. I would like for you, if you could, to save this to the computer and then post it in the comments section of my personal Facebook page where this is streaming. So anyone that's watching or listening to the show, facebook.com forward slash Jerry Miller Now. Look for the video where Steve and I are talking, and in the comments section, you will see something called a repair kit for grading. Let's get to comments. This is Johnny Ornalis. Johnny is, um, an entrepreneur, multiple restaurant owner, his wife a teacher. Jerry, a big question. How many teachers are going to control this per classroom? Very good question. Kevin Higgins for Steve. Grading equity? I'm closing my shades, turning off all my lights, and I'm going to bed for the next year. Someone please ring my doorbell when this insanity is over. If I feel like the sound of the doorbell is equitable, I'll answer it.
Don't do that. So I'm having a party tomorrow, you can do it after the party, and after the next election. We're doing a party at my house on Veterans Day. That's tomorrow. It's from four to seven o'clock. Um, everybody that's happy about how Tuesday went, everybody that put in time, effort, money, love, um, their heart into the election, please come to my house. You're in Green County, you're in Almarle, you're in, wherever you are. Come to my house. If you are in Almarle or the direct vicinity, we will be discussing how to rebuild the Republican apparatus in this area, because it is not fit for service right now, not even close. Everybody knows it. It's not, I'm not announcing any news here.
Uh, how is the Republican apparatus broken, in your eyes?
It was broken over ten years of losing and demoralization, essentially.
Keep going.
That, that's, that's what happened. Uh, it was a very strong party when Rob Bell was leading it a long time ago.
He won reelection.
Rob Bell crushes every year.
He's a machine.
He's sixteen, he's sixteen years deep at this point, and he is, the, the gap gets wider every year, because he's doing the right things. Always doing the right thing. And never does anything embarrassing.
Dude, did you see Rob Bell? Rob Bell, if you're watching this show, I know you tune in. Um, Stephen Dolan, you're welcome, sir. Rob Bell, I was so impressed with you after claiming victory. His fourth term? Is it fourth term or fifth term?
No, eighth, I think.
Is it? Okay, oh, 'cause they're two-year terms. Yeah, so eighth term. Thank you, Steve Harvey.
He's been doing this a long time. Imagine eight campaigns deep.
Dude, after Rob Bell wins, dude is on the side of the road with a thank you sign with one of his children, just holding up a sign saying, thank you for voting for Rob Bell. That was so baller.
All of his signs around the county. He had the thank you stapled up there, just like every year. He, he knows what he's doing, and he's very good at doing what he does, because he, he's been doing it for so long that he's just, he's the only expert we've got left. I'd be shocked if he's not a Supreme Court Justice nominated by Glenn Youngkin for Virginia, or whatever. What's the Supreme Court of Virginia called? The Court of Appeals, right?
Steve, Steve Harvey, um, I'm gonna throw this to you. What do you make of, what do you make of candidates running unopposed? What do you make of, Nat Galloway's come on the show, we, we have tremendous respect for Nat Galloway, current chairman of Almarle County Board of Supervisors. He sat right here in this chair next to me. Jim Andrews, Liz Palmer's replacement in the Samuel Miller District?
Yeah.
Running completely unopposed. What do you make of unopposed elections in Almarle County?
That is a disease that's been happening for about ten years now. Um, and it's very specifically Republicans in the area that have been demoralized. It was a combination of things. Um, and I don't know if I can put my finger directly on it, but I can tell you this. For the last three years, it was very specifically statues in Charlottesville that removed the ability for Republicans to stand with pride in public, uh, in this region. Elsewhere, you go fifteen, twenty minutes out of Charlottesville, and all of a sudden, you know, it's Trump flags, and you know, whatever, like, people don't care. But if you live within fifteen minutes of Charlottesville, it had a extremely damp, when Heather Hare died, it threw a blanket over all conservative activism within fifty miles of Charlottesville. Everybody did not want to go out, did not want to say what they believed, didn't, because they thought they'd be associated with all the awfulness that happened here. And they didn't want, they didn't want that. And they didn't come out, and they didn't do anything for years now. And we're just seeing the end of that. We're seeing the end of the August twelfth nonsense, the, the horror that that was. And it's a beautiful thing for Republicans, because we were the ones that hid after that. Because we were being targeted. They're the reason that these people came to Charlottesville. That's what we thought people were saying. I don't know if they're actually saying that, but that's what it felt like. And it was palpable, and it's changing. When I threw those Second Amendment rallies, it was...
Tell them about what you did.
Yeah, uh, they're, the county banned firearms on county land. So that's lakes, reservoirs, parks, you know, the places that you'd wanna have a gun in case there's a coyote attacking your kids or something like, you know, like, normal places that you might have a gun to protect yourself and your family, they banned that. And that was offensive to me and a lot of other concealed carry permit holders. We are the most law-abiding demographic in the country, bar none. This supersedes race, religion, gender, everything. If you have a concealed carry permit, you are more law-abiding than judges and police officers, according to the statistics. So the fact that they kicked us out of, of county property was very offensive. We, a bunch of concealed carry permit holders, all, you know, uh, licensed by the state, came to the county building and we had a protest. And I was intimidated by the prospect, because no one else was doing it, but it was my rights that they were stepping on. And I had to do something, and I didn't wanna be that gun nut that is on CNN, that they point at and say, look at the idiot. I didn't wanna be that guy, uh, but nobody else would do anything. And so I said, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold a rally, I'm gonna try and get them to not do this, and I'm gonna tell everybody that we're not, that we're gonna do the opposite of what the people did four or five years ago. We're not going to let anyone here that doesn't have our message exactly right, which is, these are to keep our, us and our families safe, and you're taking that away from us. And that was the message, and it, it went home. They ended up changing the law a little bit to make it somewhat less restrictive. Uh, I'm still very unimpressed, and it's pathetic.
Who led the charge on the board?
I can say, it is pathetic. Um, Anne, your father was a vet, uh, veterinarian. These animals are attacked by coyotes. There's county land that people can't drive across now to protect their animals. It's, it is a mess. It was a bad decision. It was just as bad as the rain tax, which was your idea. People don't like it. Uh, I don't know if we're gonna try and recall you. We might. Um, next year, we might try and do a recall. Anne's reasoning, Anne, your reasoning for this, that's, uh, several constituents thought that someone might have had a concealed carry firearm on them at a supervisor meeting, and so they left. That was the reason that she gave. Some people thought that someone might have a firearm. They did not see it. It was not brandished. There was no talk of it. Someone thought that maybe they saw a jacket move, and so people left. And that's why you don't have the Second Amendment rights anymore, because somebody might have seen something. And that, I mean, egregious. Aggregious to go there. The Second Amendment? I mean, okay. Sorry, I get passionate about that one. I really, that one, that one sticks in my craw, because that, you know, I've, I've gained twelve pounds of muscle since that happened. I have been a machine. I have a spinal cord injury, and I have a physical therapist, and I go and work out, and I've been doing it for five years. And it has just been a slog, right? I just barely do what I need to do to make it so that he doesn't say I'm a wuss. And for the last three months since they banned firearms, it was not a conscious decision. I realized this a couple of weeks ago, that I got on the scale, and, oh my goodness. And then I looked at the weight I was lifting, and I've put on an enormous amount of muscle in the last three months. And I think it is a subconscious, like, feeling of inadequacy that I can't, I won't be able to keep my family safe. If we go to Chris Green Lake, now there's a big picture of a gun with a line through it.
Let me throw this, let me throw this to you, let me throw this, let me drop in here. Um, talk to me about the recall.
Yeah, so I...
The likelihood of that actually happening.
So the effectiveness of it would be quite low. Uh, it would, to actually have a supervisor removed for something that was deemed by the state of Virginia to be legal is not something that is likely to happen. It would go, so if, if you don't know, a recall petition in the state of Virginia, you get enough signatures, I believe it's ten percent of the vote from the previous election. If you get ten percent of the, the previous year's election's signatures on a piece of paper, you can go to a judge and say, I want this person considered for removal. And then the judge takes a look and says, alright, I'll consider it. What did they do wrong? Oh, they banned your Second Amendment rights, but the state of Virginia said they're allowed to do that, so they're allowed to do that. But we can spend months knocking on doors, talking to people, letting them know that this happened. Most people don't know that they're now a criminal when they go onto any county property. If they have a shotgun in their trunk or something like that, you know, the, the, a shotgun shell in the seat next to you could land you in prison.
Yeah, and you have multiple people in the feed that are saying that. Um, you have, uh, Stephen Lancaster saying, I had no idea this was happening.
Most people have no idea that the school stuff was happening, that the gun stuff is happening, that, uh, well, a lot of people don't know that the statues are finally gone. Uh, I, my position on the statues has changed quite a bit.
Okay, how so?
I used to be a proponent of keeping them up.
Okay.
And then I was beaten in the face with a Lee statue for four years.
Okay, what do you mean by that?
And now, oh, just Republicans wanna, because they love slavery, like, you know, somebody says that to you enough times and points at that statue, and you start associating it, and you start saying, that's not my brand. I'm not that brand. I know the history of Robert E. Lee. He was a pretty dang decent guy, right? The, the things that he did after the war, the, the rebuilding of America, the starting a university, um, the things that he said about slavery were pretty dang good. For that time, they were fantastic. And so it, it was a ma- nasty mix of things for me, because I don't wanna take a dump on the guy that I know rebuilt America, but I also don't wanna be called a racist slave-agreer. You know, so it was four...
So how did your perspective change?
It was four years of, of that, and it changed my perspective. I said, you know, it's city, it's the city of Charlottesville. The Democrats put it up a hundred years ago. The Democrats are ripping it down. They put it up and they ripped it down for the same reason. They're obsessed with race. I'm not. I don't want anything to do with it. And now whenever anybody brings it up, I go, ah, I'm not really that interested in statues anymore. Because it just, it has nothing to do with me, really. Um, you know, I'm a Republican through and through. I believe in the Civil Rights Movement. I believe Republicans made that happen. I believe in the, the, the vote, which Republicans also made happen. I believe that the Republican Party was started very specifically to go against slavery, and that they and the NRA fought very hard after the Civil War to make sure that black people had the right to carry arms. That's what the MR, NRA, maybe not was founded for that, but that was one of their core causes for the first thirty years that they were kicking around, was allowing black people to have firearms.
I'll, I'll, I'll put this, um, for those that are asking for the repair kit for grading in Almarle County schools, the link is now in the comments section of my Facebook page. Facebook.com forward slash Jerry Miller Now, if you'd like to see it. Judah, our director, just posted it in the comments section. Look, let me ask you a very difficult question, very pointed and straightforward question. How is a Republican going to win the Whitehall District in Almarle County?
A lot of help. It wa, it's gonna take a lot of help. I'm gonna have to knock on a lot of doors.
You did that the first time.
I did that the first time, and I got a lot of votes.
You did.
And I'm gonna need to knock on more, and we're going to have to penetrate Crowe better somehow. Um...
Crowe's political ideology leaning much more toward the city of Charlottesville's these days.
Yes, very much so.
Many of city of Charlottesville residents who are priced out of the city and/or are aging and have kids and are mindful of school performance have moved to Crowe. The good old boy farmer, if you may, of Crowe is not as deep from a market share standpoint. Is that fair?
Hundred percent.
So how are you gonna do that?
Hundred percent. They feel, they feel that they've been pushed out. They really do.
The OG, the OG.
Yeah, they don't have a say anymore. There's nobody on the board that can call and say, hey, you know, that Second Amendment thing, that's gonna really negatively impact the way we do things out here. Is there any way you could...
It's now Old Trail, the third largest neighborhood in central Virginia. Number one...
Is that true?
Number one, Lake Monticello. Number two, Forest Lakes. Number three, Old Trail.
Wow. Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Um...
How do you penetrate Old Trail to win an election?
So it's gonna require higher turnout. Just like this year, we'd have to have some sort of mirror of that in two years, where a lot of, um, shy voters come out because they're interested locally in what's happening. And I'm hopeful that that's gonna happen, because at my party tomorrow, from four to seven, on Fraser Mill Road, follow the Steve Harvey signs, uh, at the party tomorrow...
Takes a lot of courage to put your address on there, on a talk show.
It's not. You have to find it.
Okay, okay. Takes a lot of courage.
Follow the signs. It's on Fraser Mill Road.
Watched by thousands here. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't wanna end up with a bunch of, of random mail in my mailbox. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't publicly post the actual address, but we, uh, we sent it out. It's in the, it's in the event, obviously. People have to be able to get there. But what was I, what was I just on? Sorry.
How, how is...
How do you win Whitehall?
How's a Republican gonna win specifically Old Trail? Because tell me, let me ask you this question. You know, I'm running for Board of Supervisors.
Yeah.
There's three voting blocks in my district, Scottsville. There's the Glenmore neighborhood that has, call it, eight hundred and forty rooftops, and we'll say one point five voters per rooftop, for a total of, say, twelve hundred or thirteen hundred votes in the Glenmore neighborhood.
Okay.
There's the town of Scottsville, and then there's the Cale-Mil Creek voting block.
Mm-hmm.
And the Glenmore voting block and the town of Scottsville voting block are somewhat similar, for different reasons. Okay? Wealthier Glenmore, um, more OG gentleman farmer Scottsville. Similar ideologies. Cale voting block, different than these two others.
Mm-hmm.
So a candidate's gotta navigate the three different blocks to potentially get into office, whether that's winning two and taking a good piece of the third, or dominating Cale and not getting beat too badly in the other two. So that's the strategy in Scottsville. I would anticipate, and I'm no expert, you are, that the strategy in Whitehall is you got to, especially with your ideology, not get beat too bad in Old Trail and the town of Crowe specifically, because you are gonna scoop up suburban Crowe?
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's crazy.
It's crazy to say that. That's the thing. You will dominate suburban Crowe.
Yeah. Well, if, if we have this trend, if this trend continues of parents being engaged on school choice and school funding and mandates and whatnot, then we're gonna see a shift. It might not take a whole new set of massive effort to take Whitehall if this kinda trend were to, uh, continue, though, you know, obviously, um, the governor didn't do that great out in Whitehall.
No.
Um, he had excellent election day results in Free Union and Earlysville. Uh, so it's gonna take a lot of boots-on-ground in the Hollis, in the mountains, producing a higher vote turnout. Uh, we can't win with a forty percent vote.
Because it's an off-off year.
I know.
Not a presidential or nor, nor a governor race. It's an off-off year.
So it's gotta be, I like Jerry Miller, I like Steve Harvey, I'll go vote because I like them.
Yes.
That's how you, that's a hard sell.
That is a hard sell.
Yeah, and there's so many downvalvet people that you have to overcome.
That's right.
Um...
Kevin Higgins says this. I think there's an opportunity for Steve to penetrate Crowe using this grading equity nonsense in a way Youngkin pounced on McCullough's gaffe about parents not having a say in their kids' schooling. Isn't this the same thing that Steve could utilize?
Oh my goodness, Jerry. So you thought the debates were fun last time.
You and Malik. Is Malik gonna run again? How old is Malik?
Honestly, I, I hope Anne doesn't run again.
How old is Supervisor Malik?
Anne seemed to be very, uh... Ann seemed to be very, well, I took her to task last time. I didn't pull any punches. I, you know, I only spoke to-
You were here, and you were bringing it, you were, you were-
I took it seriously, and she hasn't, she hadn't debated anybody in decades. And so-
Some would say ruthless.
Yeah, and she came back punching, too. When we went out to Crozay, she did another one, and she came out of the gate punching. And it put me back on my heels. It was, it was a real thing. This, this was a real campaign.
Remember the debate we hosted here?
Yes, absolutely.
And I was asking questions. Dude, it was, it was, I will put it in perspective. The tension was palpable, and it was like a blanket that we were all wearing in this studio. You did not hold punches.
No, no, and neither, well, Ann's pretty mild-mannered. But I was putting her to the question. I was saying, "Here's a quote from you on this show. Explain why New England is a better, has better government than Virginia." And I, I never, here's the date, here's when you said it, this is the context. Go ahead. Putting somebody to the question like that when they've been doing something for a very long time, and they're in a mindset and a part of life where you want to be respected for the work that you've done. Because she's been working at this a long time. I don't like what she's been working on, but she's been doing a lot of work for a long time. And you want to be respected for that. You want people to go, "I, you know, I like that you were my supervisor, and you donated your time, because you only get $15,000 a year, and that's not a lot, and thank you." That's what you want. That's the payment that you get for being a supervisor. And I started to pull away from that, because people didn't know a lot of the stuff she had said. People didn't know a lot of stuff she had voted on. And people, when they became aware of that, because it's a, it's a moderate district. It's conservative leaning out in the rural areas. It's less so in the populated areas. But there's a lot of people that liked Ann Malick before the debates started. And then they realized, "Oh my goodness." Maybe, I mean, I still love Ann because she lives nearby, but I don't like any of these ideas that she's having. Where did these ideas come from? I thought she was from here, you know?
What would, what would the response be if you guys crossed Market Street right in front of the studio and saw each other?
We keep respectful distance.
Would there be any hello or greetings, or would it be-
Um, Ann and I were at the Earlysville poll for about an hour and a half at the same time, and both of us choose not to make eye contact, I think.
Understood.
It's, it's mostly, it's a respect thing. Look, you're here, I'm here. We don't need to make that a thing. I know we disagree on, you know, everything off the shelf.
You guys, you guys completely are polar opposites.
But, but we both have the respect to not sneer, or when somebody walks up, go, "There's Ann," say something. You know, neither of us are doing anything like that. And we take, we took it, at least I did, and she did, too. Our campaign managers got dirty. That's what ended up happening. They had, I think, I don't want to speak for Ann's campaign manager, but there were decisions made throughout. I think it was largely by campaign staff to just be more aggressive than necessary, probably. I mean, there were no punches. Nothing really happened. It was just some, some phrasing on social media, some quotes that could have had more context, and most of that was generated by the campaign staff, because Ann and I don't want to be embarrassed, you know?
What do you make of Kevin Higgins' comment about utilizing grading equity in Almarle County to potentially gain market share in the booth?
That's 100%, that is exactly. Ann, you can expect it. We're gonna be talking about how the county took away our right to protect ourselves and our children in schools. Ourselves with the Second Amendment, and our kids with the not very specifically putting down the boot, saying CRT is wrong. This is CRT. This degradation of Americanized schools, it's, it's all part of the same package. It's a, what do they call it, neo-Marxist? What is it? What do you call it? Where you just try and take the existing American system and completely eradicate it by saying things like, "We're not gonna grade you based on truthfulness or honesty or effort, or whether or not you turned it in on time, or whether or not it was correct."
What'd he say?
Grading equity.
Okay, this guy's a wealth of information here, Judah Whitkower, very well-read individual.
But no, that's gonna be the issue. We're gonna be debating that. So, Ann, decide, would you like to spend five debates talking about indefensible things, like, "You don't have a right to protect yourself anymore," or indefensible things like, "You shouldn't have a say in what happens with your kid in school"?
Who's the Jim Andrews for the Whitehall? Jim Andrews, the replacement for Liz Palmer? Jim was in here on a show we do called Real Talk, and weeks before, I said that Jim was the hand-picked replacement of Liz Palmer, and he corrected me and said, "No. Liz Palmer did not replace me. I was not the hand-picked replacement of Liz Palmer. I chose to run for the Samuel Miller district." So, I'm gonna correct myself on that. Who is, if Ann does not run, and Ann, and, you know, I'm not, it's no comment on age. She's not the Ann of, is it four terms for her?
Uh, 2004, I think, is when she started. So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's not, it's been 16 years, okay?
In two years, it'll be 16.
Who would be, who would be the, the new Ann Malick in the Whitehall?
The school board candidate, or the school board, sitting school board for Whitehall. Do you have his name in front of you?
I'll look it up.
He ran last time unopposed, and he, I think, wanted to be running for supervisor, but Ann stuck around. And so I think he is waiting in the wings. I think that that might be considered their promotion system, is school board supervisor congressional candidate.
That gentleman's name is David Oberg.
Yep, David Oberg. Yeah, I met him. He's a jovial character. He was having fun during the campaign last time, because he had nobody to run against. And I would have, I would have, "Please run. I would love to debate you. It'd be, it'd be a fun experience. We'll come on here."
I just sent you a Fred request, David Oberg. Happy to host you and Steve-
Come on on!
On the, on the show. All right, dude, you, 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 you bring it when you come on the show here. You absolutely bring it. First, thank you for your service as a veteran.
Welcome.
Thank you kindly. He's hosting a party tomorrow?
That's right. 4:00 to 7:00 PM, Fraser Mill Road. So, if you're driving up 29, there is a-
There's a lot of people that listen to this and watch this show.
I know. I want, I want a lot of people to come to my house. That's what I want. Because this is a victory celebration. This was a shock. This was a miracle. I didn't think that this was possible. People kept on asking me, "So, what do you think, Steve? 50/50 tomorrow? Because look at those poll numbers." And I would go, "50/50? Where are you from? You're not from Virginia." Because I've seen poll numbers like this before. And it doesn't go the way you want it to. And then Fairfax County comes in, and you get-
That's how I thought it was gonna transpire, 100% like that.
That's how it was going to transpire. That is exactly how it was going to transpire. And I don't know if you watched closely, and I'm not allowed to talk about it yet, because I just don't have enough facts at this time, but Fairfax County, at 11 o'clock, did not report its numbers.
I did see that.
And something happened.
So, what are you alluding to here?
Hundreds of thousands of votes disappeared suddenly that had to be recounted, I believe. I don't know how much of that is accurate. Apparently, it's extremely convoluted, and no one can explain what happened. But, there were so many Republican poll watchers that it didn't matter what they did, because there was always somebody there watching. For 45 days, I had 28 volunteers at, in Almarle County. Every single moment that that polling location was open, my people had their eyes on the ballots, all the way through announcing what the numbers were out of Almarle County. That's how far we went. That's how far they went in Fairfax, in Richmond, in Virginia Beach. We had a 300% increase in poll watchers for Republicans this year in Virginia, a 300% increase. That is the red wave. The votes were just the legitimate votes. There were people in every single room making sure that every single one of those was an authentic vote. Most of them, even though there was no voter ID, most of those votes were authentic. In Almarle County, I believe, I mean, we're getting close to 99% accurate, because we were watching every second. Most of the state was very similar. The Yonkin team brought in people from other states to be poll watchers. Like, I mean, they brought in the, the big stuff, the big guns. You know what they did? This is, this is revolutionary. Let me just say this one-
I gotta, I gotta do, say this. I got a 2:00 meeting, and I'm 14 minutes away from driving time for my 2:00. I do want, we do have a couple more minutes here. This question's come in here, and then I'll give you final work, anywhere you want to go. When Steve Harvey comes on the program, the time flies. It's already 1:33. We're an hour and change in. Have you noticed?
And I'm just getting on fire now.
I, I can tell. I can tell. There's, it's always a part due needed when Steve Harvey's in, and said on the I Love Seville Network. Kevin Higgins, "Charter schools are going to be a big play in this election, in my opinion. Do you have a sense of what Old Trail and Crozay feel regarding this subject? This was a huge part of Yonkin's platform." I will add this. If grading equity becomes a reality in Almarle County, the value proposition for private schools and homeschooling has never been greater if grading equity comes in, becomes a reality. And I hate to say this, but I'm a realist who speaks facts. If grading equity is the new norm in public schools, you will see, you will see kids whose parents have means and resources either homeschool their children or send their kids to private school, and that will further the wealth gap for the next generation of Almarle Countyans. And that's just a fact.
Jerry-
Charter schools.
Jerry.
Yes. You disagree with what I said?
If you're going to use a phrase like grading equity, then I'm gonna start using phrases like dark sunlight and poleless, poleless tenants, right? Like, come on, come on. That's not a real phrase. You can't say grading equity, because grading means that you are basing it, and things are different.
You're holding people accountable!
And equity means that it's the same. So, you can't literally say the two unless you want me to laugh every time, because I'm just, it's a joke. It is a joke. They are turning your schools into a joke. And how can we stop it? How can we stop it? Come to my house. We're gonna be talking about this exactly. It's gonna be off Fraser Mill Road. There's gonna be Steve Harvey signs guiding you right into my driveway. We are gonna have flags. We're gonna have beer, bonfires, champagne, loud music. Dan Gate is coming to give a Veterans Day address. He's an awesome veteran, you know, he fought for your freedom last year. He's gonna be talking about it tomorrow night. So, 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock, especially if you are concerned about schools, the Second Amendment, the way the local government is run, you want to see a stronger Republican apparatus that's going to continue to hold everybody accountable and keep things transparent and honest, or at least that there's two hands that are in that room counting, and not just one. That was the big difference, people. The big difference between last year and this year was Republicans, on November 15th last year, watched video clip after video clip coming out of Detroit and Chicago, and they said to themselves, "Oh my goodness, if I lived there, I would have been in the room, and I would have made sure that I watched every single thing happen." And then they thought about it as this election approached and went, "I didn't do that in Virginia last year, and we got destroyed." And I wonder who was watching last year, because it wasn't Steve Harvey. I organized all the poll watchers here. I had no hand in it last year. I don't know what happened last year. Nobody knows what happened last year. But this year, people were watching, and we crushed. And I want people to be watching next year and the year after that. Come to my house. We're gonna have a party. I'm gonna sign you up to do stuff that you're gonna be proud to do. So, thank you.
Steve Harvey, Steve Harvey. And he, and he puts grading equity into perspective, Judah. I think that's called grading equity in oxymoron, right?
Yes, literally, in oxymoron.
An oxymoron.
It's very dim sunlight.
Yeah. Parting as such sweet sorrow.
Exactly.
Sweet sorrow.
Jerry, I'd love to see you go, but I hate to watch you leave.
I, Steve Harvey. Oh, God, I'm crying over here. That's funny. All right, so that's Steve Harvey, Board of Supervisors candidate, Whitehall district. We just spent 70 minutes with this guy. He brings it every time he's on the show. I did send a Facebook message to David Oberg. If he accepts, we'll see if we can organize a conversation here, because we're reading the tea leaves.
This, this might be really jumping off early. We're two years before the election. I would think, I mean, if he wants to talk, we can start the debates now. That would be-
Less than two years now.
Just less than two years.
Yeah, but still, less than two years.
But still, it's true. And I'm campaigning. My signs are up, and they're not coming down, because there's no local, there's no local races.
There's nothing left between now and then.
If you see a Steve Harvey sign, and somebody's doing something to it, and it's not me, that's vandalism.
That's vandalism. All right, I gotta go. I gotta 2:00. So, he's Steve Harvey. We didn't even talk real estate with him. The guy did, the guy was so on fire. Judah Whitkower, Steve Harvey, Jerry Miller, the I Love Seville Show, tomorrow, another veteran in-house. David and his wife Kirsty, entrepreneurs, husband-and-wife business owners, homeowners. They're gonna join us on the program tomorrow at 12:30, as we celebrate and champion military, military-service veterans here on the I Love Seville Network. Thank you kindly for joining us, guys. You take care. Steve Harvey, you're on fire.
That was fun.
You're absolutely on fire, per usual. Nice to talk.